Okay, we'll come back to order. Interviews for Planning and Zoning Commission appointments resuming here. Jane Matthews, thank you both for your service, not just the past few years, but extending back much longer. And thanks for reapplying. Format is going to be 20-minute interview here. You have a couple of minutes to offer an overview, and then we'll go to Q and A, just in random order here. Maggie will give us a three-minute warning, so we'll all know when we need to head toward wrapping up. So with that, let's take it away. The floor is yours. Thank you.
Okay. Well, good afternoon, Mayor and Council members. Appreciate the opportunity to again come before you as a member of the community interested in service to the city of Asheville. It is something that I hold dear personally and professionally. It's something that I strive to do the best and fairest job at, no matter whether I am serving on this commission or in past efforts with the city of Asheville. So I appreciate the opportunity to reapply, understand the process, and I'm here to answer questions and hopefully provide any additional information.
Great. Well, let me open the floor for questions from Council. Okay, ahead. Chris.
Jane, I sat in in the last marathon meeting, the Plan Z meeting, and genuinely, I think you did longer than some of the, most of the ones we've had. It was probably a seven-hour meeting. And one of the issues is going to come to Council, so it's not so much about, you know, position on that. But it was interesting to me that there's a proposal for affordable apartments on Hazel Mill Road. There's a contingent of residents there. And for me, it sort of came down to this thing of competing strategic demands being on the table there. That on the one hand, Council has said that we want to do affordable apartments in town along transit routes, and seemingly this development meets that criteria there. But at the same time, we're also committed to multimodal transportation. Hazel Mill Road, according to the neighbors there, gets very crowded at certain times of day. So there's sort of a conflict on that one there. Can you elaborate a little bit about how you perceive the question before planning?
Sure. And this is a question that we have faced previously at that particular site. I think it came down to, and I probably speak for myself as well as many other commissioners, that Hazel Mill Road, the problem is inherent, is not necessarily attached to the pros or cons of this project. That the transportation problem along Hazel Mill, the fact that it's a major cut through to Lester Highway, is something that superseded this actual review process. City staff made it pretty apparent that the traffic impact was minimal. It doesn't mean that it doesn't contribute, but it has a minimal contribution. And I think we were probably found that the developer was making a very generous offer to try to at least strategize solutions with the community out of his own pocket. He wasn't providing implementation, but he was at least going to further the dialogue, which is probably something that we need to do generally as a community in those kinds of areas. So your question, I mean, I think it's a valid one that's Council will have to think about. Do you take something that was inherently meets that goal of councils to provide housing at a very affordable rate and a sustainable project? I mean, it even has that aspect, which, you know, we're not as focused on right now, but I think it's an important aspect of especially affordable housing, that it's energy efficient. And then hopefully work to solve some of the other problems, which again, not generated by that proposal, but by just development patterns probably way beyond Hazel Mill Road. And this is where planning has a role. And we have to constantly look at what is impacting small areas, but that are coming from way beyond. So, but the community, to their credit, came out and spoke, I think, quite eloquently about the problem. And they did whenever that project came previously in a different iteration, like two years ago.
Thank you.
Another question. Jane.
Jane, thanks for your service. And something that's been a concern to me, and I really appreciate your perspective on it. The Downtown Master Plan gave Planning and Zoning the final review of Level Two projects. And to incorporate that, or with that, the Level Two projects outside of the downtown is their technical review type questions. What's good and bad about that?
Yeah, we're debating that internally. I mean, the bad is that it's technical, and not everybody on the commission has a technical background to look at it the same way that our technical staff does. And I think a second pair of eyes is not a bad thing sometimes, but it's rare that we find something that to criticize. Very rare. And we had something this past month, and it was probably an interpretation, but fortunately the developer was very amenable to looking at a change, minor thing, where the location of the dumpster was in terms of the community's concerns and its access, how it was accessed from the public right of way. And we interpreted public right of way differently than staff. Again, the developer was amenable and made the changes. So in that case, the second pair of eyes was actually a good thing, probably helped the community get a trash situation away from the front of their houses. But in general, you know, staff does a good job at looking at the technical aspects. So it's a hard one. I know that you're debating it as well. I'm happy either way. I think, you know, 99% of the time, staff's right. It's that 1% that we provide a second pair of eyes.
I kind of confused my own question there by adding too much to it. But the concern I have is the Level Two in the downtown.
Oh, just downtown?
Yeah, the downtown, of course, that gives you final approval or disapproval there with very large projects. So how do you view that?
How do we do that? Or how do we?
How do you feel about that?
Well, we'll probably have more if the trend is going on. Again, the reviews have been pretty much pro forma. We have followed staff's recommendation. I think we only ran into the, it was the Cambria Suites problem that with, you know, concern from an adjacent property owner that was, went through the channels of review. And we didn't, you know, we followed the rules of that. Again, I think we're the second pair of eyes on the project, but it's not necessary in total.
My real overarching concern is, are we going to see everything be 12 stories and less in the downtown in order to keep from coming to this political process rather than a technical?
And, you know, we've talked about that. I don't know the economics of the 12-story. I mean, there are certain construction costs associated as you get high-rise, get above high-rise. So I'm not sure whether it's totally the review process. It's probably partially that. It's probably partially an economic development strategy as well. So to be fair, there are probably two sides to that coin in terms of what limits height in downtown. And, you know, Council has already given direction through the master plan as to where height could be. So I think you've set the parameters. It's the choice of the development community to abide by that or not, I guess.
Thank you. Questions?
Something I've asked the two previous interviews, or both sitting members as well, trying to get a handle on this. At the recent decision concerning Kenilworth, a variance was permitted on road width to allow the roads to be narrower than our rules would say. How do you decide when to grant a variance if the goal of our rules is to improve roads?
This was a modification, you're talking about the most recent review that's coming to you, I guess? It's a modification of the road width from, the road width is typically 22 feet. It was a modification to 20 feet. Both fire department, city staff, and common sense would say 20 feet isn't acceptable width. The traffic lane is often eight and a half to nine feet wide. So it still allows for flow of traffic. The more significant modification was probably in the right-of-way modification. But again, and I did ask staff this, city of Asheville has a considerable number of existing streets and existing communities and existing neighborhoods without that right-of-way. It is the desired goal, but it is not the rule. So it seemed fair, and especially within the Kenilworth community, where existing road structures sometimes narrow, and the limit to the number of units that were on that particular street seemed like a reasonable request.
Okay. Thank you. Questions?
Jane, I'll ask.
Sure.
Could you reflect some on the emerging discussions around updating the comprehensive plan, perhaps taking a look at changes in the UDO? Areas of the UDO that might need addressing more than others?
Yeah, yeah.
And talk also, you were involved, I think, in the development of the UDO back in the mid-'90s as well. Is that true?
I was a citizen appointee to the neighborhood advisory part of it originally, and later as a commissioner.
So I mean, you've got some experience in that, as does Jane.
Yeah.
But anyway, if you could also reflect on the public process, how you see that going? The relationship between the Planning and Zoning Commission and Council, too, just brought over you of all that.
And I wrote a lot about this when I submitted my resubmital for this position. But I think there's some underlying things in the UDO in terms of vision and goals that are, I don't think, changed much from version to version. I think Ashevilleians commonly share some basic values. I mean, it's good to revisit those and reinforce them, but it is definitely outdated. And I think when we set, we set some matrices for implementation that are pretty far out there. One of the recommendations I had, and it was based on sustainability commission experience that we had with Council, where we would set yearly goals and run them by Council. And I think that that's another way that the UDO could be more timely, because we can anticipate, we couldn't have anticipated in the 2025 plan, some of the things that are happening now. We had a down surge, we had downfall of the economy. We had now the upsurge and the rapid growth of things like that slope. Or the fact that the Council has set new goals on innovation zones. I mean, those are things that we couldn't have anticipated necessarily. So I think having a more timely series of intermediate goals that maybe are shaped by Planning and Zoning Commission and given to Council as a recommendation for input and let that be almost a yearly or bi-yearly sort of format might be a better, more living, breathing document. But I think it's, there are definitely things economics have changed, and exceptions changed. I mean, things that we can't rely on as part of our comp plan need to be revised. It's definitely outdated, and it happened fast.
We have an upcoming joint meeting with City Council and Planning and Zoning. Do you have any hopes or expectations about what we might cover in that meeting?
I know we did some work in this past, probably now more than a year ago, looking at some of the areas, and particularly in the comp plan, that have sort of gotten out of date, need some focus. I know one area in particular was Patton Avenue, looking at sort of areas where we might be able to encourage more intense growth, setting some guidelines for that. And I think we probably need direction from Council. Obviously, we want to hear probably the innovation zones, how we might, I know that's infrastructure, but how can zoning, planning help further those, that initiative, I think, in some areas? I mean, there are underlying plans, but are there tools that we can look at, or should there be emphasis on a, something like Haywood Road, form-based code for those areas? Is that a way to get buy-in and a certain level of certainty besides the investment that Council's making? I think those are at least a couple of things I would throw on the table for discussion.
So kind of some more general direction in terms of, besides review?
Right.
Some more initiations that are, initiatives that are outside the review?
I think the planning aspect, and we see things at Council, you know, where, not Council, excuse me, Planning and Zone Commission, where, you know, had we been proactive, had we had had some updates to the plans, probably some of the problems that we run into with development issues between community neighbors could be ameliorated if there were some more certainty or some updates. I mean, we have some zonings that, I mean, you're seeing the loss of institutional, I mean, industrial zoning. So how do we, how do we shape that? Where do we shape it? Do we maintain what we have? Do we look for new zoning districts or new areas that we have to protect to meet that Council need? So, but at the same time, we're trying to balance the housing. So we're sort of fighting that battle on a zoning table that might be better done proactively instead of in the heat of a submittal.
Well, in the spirit of, you know, being proactive, one of the things we're hearing about is hotspots, where there's zoning that's maybe inconsistent with the zoning right next to it. So in the spirit of being proactive, can you talk about how we would go about making those changes?
Oh, in an ideal world?
Sure. Is that where we live?
Well, you know, I think that what happened along Haywood Road, and I know that that was a long process in a way. The form-based part was short in the scope of things. But the, that buy-in, I think, helped create a higher density of development with some certainty and some aesthetic considerations that our community just demands. I mean, they demand a high level of quality and livability in general. And so I think if we can identify hotspots and maybe focus on some, I think I wrote something to the effect that we're not a one-size-fits-all, and we tend to have zoning that is one-size-fits-all. And that's where we fail. We succeed when we have, when we have shaped things that address riverfront, or that address downtown, or that address Haywood Road, because those are unique. And that's what makes Asheville unique, are those special places. So I think if we can identify hotspots sooner than later, and I know it takes a resource, you know, it takes either staff time or an independent consultant, but it may be worth an investment, in a sense, to shape areas and maybe achieve goals that Council wants, whether it's increased density, whether it's a mixed use, whether it's, you know, industrial use, whatever it is, you know, just to help shape that in a more consensus-based format. And that's what came out of Haywood. It was consensus. It wasn't, everybody didn't agree, but it came to a general consensus that this was better than what we had. Thank you.
In the, as you were talking about, first of all, thanks for doing everything that you've done.
Oh, thanks.
Rereading your list of accomplishments in this town. I truly appreciate how much time and energy you've spent on so much.
That's what happens when you live here 30-some-odd years.
It doesn't happen for everybody that does, so I appreciate what you do.
Thanks.
In some of those competing interests, you were talking about higher aesthetic bars to hurdle and higher quality bars to hurdle, and at the same time, recognizing that we are moving towards this, trying to encourage some new and different ways of seeing our city through density and smart growth. I have some concern that when we're talking about the aesthetic, that we can shut the door to innovation and shut the door to change and newness. I know that over on the West Side, we've seen a lot of really interesting single-family homes going up that might in other parts of town create alarm. So I just wonder if you could reflect on that for a moment, that tension?
Again, I think that's where the one-size-doesn't-fit-all sometimes is a good thing. You know, we do have different character in different parts of our neighborhoods, and sometimes the form-based code defines a form that is more or less adaptable to that particular area of town. I think there are some tools. I know, you know, one of the things that I was looking at was, you know, parking alternatives, something, you know, can we come up with some tools that define parking in new ways that get integrated into construction and less spread out on the urban landscape so that we have higher density within the parking? But when I say aesthetics, it's somewhat form-based, not necessarily that it's modern or contemporary or traditional. I mean, it's a matter of setting scale, mass, to some extent. So I don't know if that answers your question, but I don't think there's a one-size-fits-all. I mean, I've always said that. And I think that, you know, that form-based code process, I was impressed with what came out of it, the flexibility, but, you know, the balance that it allowed for areas of Haywood Road that had more.
It's very interesting along those commercial corridors to do that. I think it looks very different once you get into your residential neighborhoods and form-based coding in those areas and still being able to have that.
I don't know if there's much that guides that, though. I mean, you know, that, I mean, that there have been huge issues with the infill that has come. I know, you know, there's some talk, I've been talking to some of the staff about looking at smaller lot sizes, things like that, ways to increase density. But I don't know that aesthetics really necessarily have played into at least Planning and Zone Commission's review.
I was thinking of the Chestnut Street.
Oh, you know, that one, it was, there was an aesthetic issue, I would probably, you know, say for the community, but there were many other issues from my perspective that were greater than that. And I tried to expound some of those in my submittal, but parking being one, how we define parking below buildings. And I'm an architect, so I know building code, and I keep mentioning this to staff, that it would be good if our building code kind of paralleled some of our zoning code, where we talk about those same issues. We should be talking in the same language, because it creates confusion, it creates misinterpretation. And that's just not there yet, and I brought that up. But I did, podium parking was one of those things for that project that bothered me. You know, it had no entrance, had no front. There are certain things that I expect in a community. I want to be able, my child, to be able to trick-or-treat at the front door.
Let's go ahead and wrap up. We've actually run out of time.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
I didn't catch that.
Jane, thank you so much for.
You're welcome.
Your service and for being here today and your application. We'll be making this decision later this evening during the council session.
Well, thank you again. I appreciate it, and thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you for your application. You've been active in the community for quite a while, and your energy toward this opportunity is much appreciated. Let me describe the process briefly, and then we'll turn the floor over to you. 20-minute total interview. You're welcome to offer a couple of minutes, if you like, of just whatever outline points you'd like to emphasize with us. We've all read the material you presented in advance. Thank you for that.
Okay, sure.
The bulk will be for Q and A from us, and Maggie will offer a three-minute warning when we've, when we're getting down the stretch, so we'll, and I'll make sure you're aware of that. So the floor is yours.
Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate the opportunity to be here, to be interviewed for the position on the Planning and Zoning Commission. As Vice Mayor Mark Hind had indicated, I've been involved in several different commissions in the community over my career, and I'm very much dedicated to being a citizen who's involved in public service. So I welcome the opportunity to be considered on Planning and Zoning. And I guess, go ahead and ask questions, and maybe if I have a minute to wrap everything up at the end, that would be, that'd be good as well.
Sounds great. Well, floor's open for questions, colleagues. Okay. You're good at that, Jane.
Peter, thanks so much for applying and all that you've done for the community. It's been considerable. I think the most recent thing that had great visibility was Downtown Master Plan, and then the opportunity for a business improvement district. And I know you've worked very hard on both those things. And the concern I have that came from the master plan is the Level Two final review at Planning and Zoning. It's a very large envelope for not coming to this board, and it's a lot of responsibility in Planning and Zoning. But it was afforded by, as a recommendation of the Downtown Master Plan. Do you have any concerns, or what's your feeling about that?
Well, I think it's, in the process of arriving at that number, there was a lot of considerable give and take, back and forth, as to what would be an appropriate square footage size for a building that would need to come to City Council. And I think the overriding concern was the fact that when a project comes to City Council, that it's a large-scale project, that there's not enough, well, it usually takes two consecutive presentations by a developer to have a full understanding of what it would be either passed and approved by Council or not. And I think that, in my mind, is one of the issues that drove the size of the project limit as high as it did. Now personally, I don't see an issue as long as the project that is coming forward meets the, you know, the zoning requirements for that particular site. I would be very uncomfortable looking at a very large-scale project that was asking for a major zoning change or some type of revision or an exemption that had no precedent. So it's, I think, to answer your question in summary, it's, I'm comfortable with the limit where it is right now, but only in regards to a project that meets all of the, you know, the guidelines and rules that are in the zoning ordinance.
Okay, it's more of a technical type review, but then, I guess, one of my concerns is that we're not seeing any big, really tall projects come out of this right now. We're seeing everything go level 12 stories or less.
Right.
So that's, to me, something we need to revisit.
Well, I think a lot of that, the reason you're seeing projects of the smaller size is just because the, I think it's an externality that's preventing those types of projects from happening that probably don't have anything to do really with the zoning ordinance here. It's more of a financing issue.
That's the second time I've heard that today.
Yeah, that's the driver. That's, that and the, the building code limits, there's a high restriction, as you all may know, of 75 feet between a low-rise building and a high-rise building. And a high-rise building is much more expensive, much more time-consuming, much more capital-intensive to undertake, as I know from personal experience, so.
Other questions?
Call me when. Peter, I noticed here that you, you thought that our UDO is difficult to navigate. And one suggestion that I've heard is to, when and if we were to redo our UDO, as opposed to using completely words, that we would flowchart the UDO. Do you have an opinion whether that would make it easier to navigate, or maybe even more importantly, like, easier to write?
Well, I think both. I think it would be much easier to navigate. There's a major trend in information output now that's infographics, because it's easier to read, it's easier to understand, it's easier for a wider range of people to understand the point fairly quickly. So I would be an advocate of keeping the language as it is, as the legal document that backs it up, but reference, have that be the reference to either flowchart diagrams or spreadsheet charts or visual, you know, form-based code-type modeling. I think that would be very useful. And I think that there are multiple ways to interpret the written language, but a visual image of this is the size that's allowed and where it can be is unambiguous. So that would be my preference.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, this is probably an odd question. It just popped into my mind, though. When we were considering the hotel, the new hotel next to the Grove Arcade, planning staff said that they felt that the open space requirement around a large building was partly met by the roof of the Grove Arcade. Does that seem to you like open space or like a building?
Well, that seems like the building. If the open space is not accessible, then it's not open space.
Right. That's what was my feeling. I just wondered how.
Yeah. Well, the other part of that to consider is, and we wrestle with this on Downtown Commission a lot, was one of the goals in an urban environment is to build out to the sidewalk and maximize the site. And the issue of requiring open space is counterintuitive to what a, an urban, dense urban environment ought to be. So I think there's some work that needs to be ongoing in really sorting out what that is. I've never liked the idea of having a so-called public plaza that's really private, and a rooftop garden is, of course, an amenity for the people who own and live in the building, but it's not open space.
Questions? Chris?
Peter, thanks for being here.
Thank you.
We call it the Planning and Zoning Commission, but in reality, it seems like what we've heard from some of the members is that a lot of, most of their time is spent in development review. The planning component of it, how do you see you contributing to that, and is there areas that you think need particular attention?
Well, I could, I think the answer to the question, I can give you a little bit of an idea of how I approached my involvement on the of an idea of how I approached my involvement on the downtown commission. The way the downtown commission's ordinance is written is that it's a, in one sense, a redevelopment authority, that it has the ability and the legal structure to work forward in actually planning and implementing projects downtown. And I would be an advocate of at least looking at, or constantly upgrading and updating master plans as part of what the Planning and Zoning Commission would do. I think if we're just reacting to projects that come in, worst-case scenario, we would be looking at a project that might need a variance, or multiple variances, and if they're stacked up one after another, month after month, then pretty soon, the reacting becomes the planning, and there's no, you know, after about a year or so, we would come to realize, well, you know, we passed these two dozen projects, and they really aren't what we wanted, but incrementally, they met certain criteria or compromised. So I think it's always a good idea to step back and look at the bigger picture in terms of what we want the physical shape of the community to look like.
Thank you.
Peter, I'll go. I, the, this council has expressed preference for increased compact development, or more compact development density, residential and mixed-use neighborhoods and so on. There's talk of reform of the, or updating of the comprehensive plan, and possible reform of the UDO. Can you reflect on what your own, how that might align or not with your own goals, what you see as a process to consider moving through if we go down that path?
Well, I think that the overall, long-term goal of creating density and not sprawling is an admirable goal for the city. I think that, you know, there's limited resources to build new roads and maintain new roads, and water lines, sewer lines, all those things that are in less-dense developments end up costing more per acre for the taxpayer than it would be in a denser type of environment. But I would start with, I think increasing the density in the single-family neighborhoods is always going to be problematic. I mean, I think you're going to get a lot of pushback from that, but what I would look at is the areas, there's a lot of unbuilt or underutilized area, for example, in downtown Asheville that can be built up with non-high-rise buildings, that we create a nice level of density, and be affordable enough to address issues of sustainability and workforce housing, among the other goals that the council has expressed an opinion in. Moving further on out, in the neighborhoods that have denser zoning, not so much single-family on large lots, but smaller lots, I would look at the main thoroughfares that run through those neighborhoods, for example, what's recently done on Haywood Street in West Asheville, and look at ways to make that more dense without impacting negatively the surrounding neighborhood. Couple of things I think to keep in mind, I've thought about this over the past week, when I knew that I was going to have an opportunity to speak with you, is, if we're looking at issues such as sustainability and workforce housing as a goal, I think we need to be aware that, particularly in financing right now of any type of development project, what I've seen is, and I don't know how to get around this, but it's a major problem, is the fact that if you're a developer, and you're developing rental income housing, and it needs to be targeted at a certain level, well, banks typically require that you have a debt coverage ratio of 25% above what the actual note is, so, or the rent is for the unit, so those are the types of issues that we aren't going to be able to really do anything about, so we need to come up with alternate ways to create the density, create the sustainability that, you know, that we're looking for.
Thanks for being here, Peter, I really appreciate it. You said something in your response to the fifth question, I was just hoping you could expand on it a little bit. You talk about some obligation on the part of the general public to have an understanding of the risks of the development process, and an obligation on the part of the developer to be fully knowledgeable and vested in our community. I was wondering if you could kind of tell me what that would look like for you?
Well, I think that would look, what I would imagine is that bigger, more controversial projects end up having an us versus them. There's always a battle between a developer who doesn't really know the city or the community, and a neighborhood that really, that may be made up of individuals who are active, who don't understand the development process, and the financial risks involved in that. And I think it would be a great thing to be able to institute some type of means that they could all get together in a manner that is more relaxed, a little bit more educational, and would have a way for people could, that they can understand the other side's issues. Because, you know, we've seen a lot of projects where developers come in from out of town, and they're, some of them are clients of mine, and they, they just have a hard time understanding Asheville, and they want to do the right thing, but they have no idea how to do it. And they look at it from, through a lens from a different city. And then, in this community, we've seen on downtown commission, people who, they don't want to see anything taller than a two-story building, and they don't understand the implication that if you spread that out over the, all of Buncombe County, that it's going to be, it would be terrible for the long-term growth of the city. So I think both sides have issues that are very important to them, but I think it would be very helpful to institute a way to bring the sides together in a, in an informal way to, you know, just to get to know each other. Little southern hospitality.
More questions, colleagues? Going once, going far. Okay, great. You've been great with your responses. We'll be making our decision, I believe, toward the end of tonight's council session, and Maggie can update you in the morning if you like, or you can monitor tonight, but thank you so much.
All right, thank you all very much for your consideration, I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Peter.
General Dorf, thank you for being here with us. I'm Mark Hunt, I'm the vice mayor, I chair these boards and commissions-type sessions, and thank you for being here. I think you have not been on this commission before. I would like to outline the process a little here. Twenty-minute interview, we'd like to offer you a couple minutes to provide, outline, highlight points, anything you like. Most, of course, would be Q and A from us, and Maggie Burleson, the city clerk, will give us a three-minute warning when we're getting near the end. So, with that, I'll let you take it away.
Right, well, thank you very much for taking the time to meet with me, and I'm always happy that I make it when delivering babies, that's what I was just doing right now, so. There's always, I have partners, but, you know, it's really simple. I mean, this is something, you know, it's kind of weird, how does an OBGYN become, in the past, on a zoning and planning commission? Because I realized, it's very simple, I'm a homeowner. My job as a physician, not just taking care of patients, but the other things that I do in my career, I do a lot of things with teaching, education, it's about using discretion, and making decisions, and being able to make decisions when decisions need to be made. And I've never seen my goal, or my role, when I sort of, the zoning commission, my old township in Ohio, to be making decisions. There's a land use plan, there are rules in place, it's using that discretion, and, you know, being collaborative with people to try to make the best decision. And, you know, I've been on, the zoning commission I was on had a lot of architects, and a lot of building developers, and I was this kind of plain old homeowner guy, who just, hey, this is what makes sense, this is the vision I have of our township, that we have of our township, and let's, you know, be this neutral person who just has the best interest, has no hidden agenda, just wants to do the best thing for the place that they live, and that's really important, it's that involvement that's really critical. When people don't get involved, and you guys know this, you're in public service, it's a really important thing. And this is one of those weird things that, yes, I actually have some experience in zoning and planning, which is not really typical for someone in my job title, but it's something that I really enjoy doing, and I think this is really important to have a perspective that may be similar, but maybe very unlike other people who are applying for this position.
Great. Thank you for that, and I'll open the floor for questions from council members.
So you've been probably observing our, our issues over the past couple years, and one, one recommendation that I heard today from a neighborhood association, we have, we ask that, well, the city gives notice to the neighborhoods and the properties that are budged up against a new development, et cetera, and we give them a 10-day notice, so we write the letter to them 10 days ahead of time, and before, it goes before P and Z. And the recommendation that I heard today was, maybe that notice, that that's not enough notice time, because people may be on vacation, or whatever, so instead, give the notice ahead of the TRC meeting. What's your thought on that?
I think you can't give people enough notice these days. I mean, life is different than it was 15, 20 years ago. I know my life is different. My job is not nine-to-five, and never was going to be nine-to-five, but, you know, most peoples don't work that way, and they have an incredible number of other commitments. They have kids, and me having two people working a job in the family, or working around childcare, so I think people like to be involved, I think it's how to involve them, and I think that's really, like, one of those questions, and the supplementary questions, how do we get people involved? And it's never a simple answer, but I think more notice is usually better than less notice. I know, you know, I can usually get, make really important things with five or 10 days' notice, but things that may be important but not hypercritical, I may not be able to do. And I think we give people more notice, that would only help the process, doesn't guarantee it by any stretch, but I think, you know, notifying the local homeowners by mail, and also having those very obvious signs that are out there, I mean, that's how I normally notice something's going on, hmm, there's a zoning planning sign going up, what's going on there? And then being able to go right to the website to know what it's about, to say, hey, I have something that I can contribute to this, I have something I want to describe, or give part of this process, I think that makes a great deal of sense, to give them more notice than less notice. I mean, 10 days may have been a really wonderful timeframe in the past, I just think it's a tough time period for most people these days, so I would definitely encourage that.
Thank you.
Chris?
Sort of related to Councilwoman Whistler, so, we have a lot of developments that come to council, and to the Planning and Zoning Commission, where naturally, by its very nature, it involves change, and sometimes surrounding neighbors have a difficulty with that. And we had a recently one in the Kennelworth neighborhood that came before the Planning and Zoning Commission, and technically, the proposal met the standards of the city by and large, but obviously, it was taking away an urban forest, and naturally, there was a lot of concern on the surrounding neighbors there. What relief, what advice, what, anything might you be able to, as a member of Planning and Zoning, give to the neighbors in a situation like that?
Then, always are tough decisions. I mean, if you ever want to see people get very angry, mess with their houses. I mean, I'm, my favorite zoning commission story is relatively suburban area, we had a big farm, you know, probably 400-acre farm that was being developed, and people called it the Terry Farm. Like, oh, and one guy in the commission meeting goes, that's not a farm, it has no animals, and then Mr. Terry whispers, I'll show him a farm, and puts pig pens and horses right at the abutting property. So people take their property very seriously, that's how I always remember that story, and why I remember that story. You're never going to make everyone happy, and that's the difficulty. If everyone was going to be happy, and everything was simple, then there'd be probably no need for a lot of what we do. It's all about balance, balancing what's, you know, what's in the land use plan, what people think are his property, where we're moving as a city, versus, you know, the homeowners that also have a very big role in this. I think there's always a hope and a plan for some sort of remediation, and some sort of compromise. Sometimes there's not, and I think there are times you have to be able to have the guts to say, yeah, this is difficult, this is not necessarily what you thought of, but this is probably, you know, in the best use of what we can do, and what is really going to move the city forward. Sometimes you can change development to make it so you keep some of that open space, because I think open space is a great thing to have. I mean, I'm always sad when open space gets taken away. I love the idea of backfilling currently-developed land that may be somewhat run down, and reusing it rather than taking down new space, because I think that's why a lot of people love living in the mountains. I think you have to sort of work with them. Sometimes it's going to, you know, you love to make everyone happy, but you're just never going to do it in some cases, and I think you just have to look at the land use plan, look, you know, go with your convictions, what is, you know, where's the direction we want to go as a city, and then stick by it, and that's sometimes really difficult.
Thanks.
So, in, in Ohio, oh, I'm just asking if you had experience with this in, you know, your other community. We have what we affectionately call hotspots, or the P and Z calls hotspots, where you've got zoning, you know, typically like highway industrial, budding right up against residential zoning, so there's no transition, some would argue that highway industrial is never appropriate within the city, but nonetheless, it's there. And then there's no buffer between that and clearly residential. In the, and we're struggling with that, and trying to figure out, well, how do you, can you change the zoning before there's an actual transaction, et cetera? Did you have any, do you have any experience with that from your other?
I do, actually. I'm still a liberty township in Ohio where I lived prior, was right, I-75 cuts right through it. I-75 is actually the most-traveled road in North America. It goes from Detroit all the way down to Atlanta, and we obviously had an industrial quarter right off I-75, not shocked. A couple things that we did is, one, we had overlay zones, so we had an overlay zone that was nearby, where it was a little bit more stringent in the zoning to allow more buffering to occur, but also what the township did, and it was a little bit easier to do because land costs were, they actually bought a part of the land to help that transition, to say, no, this is now township land. They, it was landscape, they did some things with the street scape to sort of make it a little bit more smooth, you know, we had nice trees in the middle of the road that kind of abutted the highway, worked with some of the neighbors to actually ask what they liked about that plan, and what, how they wanted to look, and we sort of, you know, I wouldn't say we totally mitigated it, but I think we definitely made it more palatable to everybody. So I think sometimes it's being a little bit creative, finding ways to do it. Now, that's not always the answer, I mean, it's great to say, hey, this city, just buy all the land you don't want to use, but sometimes, it was a pretty small parcel, but it really allowed, you know, to do some things that were pretty novel, and know it was also protected, that it wasn't going to be developed, so the landowners on both sides had the confidence that it was going to be, you know, nicely done, and have a little bit of flexibility.
Our council, this council has talked a lot recently about increased density, compact development, to address affordability and grow in tax base. It's also a trend nationally. We contemplate an update to the comprehensive plan, and perhaps reform of the UDO on the heels of that. Can you talk a little bit about how you might see that process go, and the role of P and Z relative to the role of council, public engagement, et cetera, what to watch out for, how all that fits for you?
I mean, having the good fortune or misfortune of going through a comprehensive plan in the old township that I was in, the more input you get is better, and I think that's critical. I think when you have city council, the professional zoning staff, you know, homeowners as well as business owners working together, that's critical. I think you can never not get enough input into those big decisions. Those become potentially contentious as well. I think mixed use works really well, I think there's a way to do it well, there's a way to do high-density well. I think a lot of people equate high-density to cheap, and that's not necessarily the case at all. I mean, go to Biltmore Park, I used to live in the apartments there, high-density, or high-ish density, pretty nice. It can be done throughout a whole level of income and cost structures for housing. I think it's truly a collaborative effort, because I think a lot of it's breaking down barriers, but people, you know, I think there's this gut reaction certain people have when they hear high-density, you know, it makes their, you know, the noses and their, the hair in their noses curl, and that's really not necessarily the case. I think it's discussing what it really means, and how, if you really want to be a viable city, you want to be able to be sustainable, you want to find ways to not build out, but build from within, and using a variety of different sort of structures and housing options for people, and I think that's really what makes a city attractive. I mean, I get very upset when people say, hey, I can't afford to live in Asheville anymore, it's pricing me out of the market, it's hard to get an apartment. I have a patient that was pregnant and homeless, because she can't find an apartment to live in, her and her husband both work, and that's something I don't want to see, I mean, I want them to be able to live here, eventually found an apartment the day she delivered, but I think we have to find ways of doing that, and I think, you know, being able to live comfortably and sustainably is not just a right, it's incredibly core to what we want for people that we live and work with. So I think collaboration is easy. Easy is said, but it can easily be done, but I think people are motivated, you know, when you start framing it in terms like I'm trying to frame it.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay, great. Thank you. Questions? Jan?
Yes. On Liberty Township, how is it similar to Asheville? Does it have an urban portion and a more rural or suburban area around it? Or is it more rural in nature or suburban?
It was more suburban in nature, I'd probably say, but changing. So, you know, in the course of the 10 years I lived there, population went from 45,000 to 70,000. We built, literally built two hospitals, a children's hospital, 200-bed children's hospital and 600-bed general use hospital. So we're talking about the rapid growth cycle. Didn't really have a core downtown, which was interesting. We had a sort of a, an area called the Bethany Neighborhood. That was sort of an old downtown area that over time really didn't become the center. And we were actually trying to find ways through overlay planning and some other initiatives to try to become, have that become sort of the center of the city. We were thinking about moving the library there, really to make it something more viable rather than having a big bunch of strip malls, which the town next to us had, which we were trying to avoid because we wanted really to be a place that people wanted to live in, found it attractive. So, you know, you're talking about, you know, the comparison between what I did in Ohio and here are totally different. You're talking about, you know, Ohio has different laws compared to zoning in general. But at the same time, I think there are things that you can bring over because once again, it's not for me to decide what is proper. That's been done already. You have a land use plan. You have a comprehensive plan. A lot of it's just adapting that to what, you know, people who want to develop and people who want to make changes want to do. And I think that's really what I always see this position as. You know, I'm not, you know, no one in the zoning and planning commission is a czar. You know, they have enough czars in Washington right now. They're working on Ebola right now, God love them. But I think we're really trying to take people's needs and try to adapt them as best we can to what we want as a community. And that's already kind of set forth for us. It's not that hard.
Thank you. More questions? Okay, I think we're satisfied. I called you, Mr., a few minutes ago and I meant to say, Dr., I apologize.
I've gotten over that.
Right. Well, I love that you just delivered a child before you got here. Do you have another waiting for you?
I have another, actually, I have a surgery to do at seven o'clock.
Great. Well, we'll let you get on with that important.
Thank you so much for.
You're welcome. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Really appreciate it.
That's pretty interesting.
I'm glad to take it. I deserve it.
Is it long enough?
Hudson, welcome. My name is Mark Hunt. I'm the vice mayor. And on these appointment sort of things, the vice mayor generally chairs these things. So welcome and meet the rest of city council. You may know some of us.
Hello.
Let me describe the process a little bit and then we'll just dive right in. A 20-minute interview. You're going to be welcome to take a couple of minutes or so, provide any kind of overview, highlight points. We've all read the documents you provided. And then we'll do questions and answers. Maggie Burleson, the city clerk, will give us the three-minute warning. And so with that, we will dive right in. The floor is yours. Thank you.
Well, thank you for having me. My name's Laura Burner Hudson. I'm an Asheville native who took off after college and has come back with family in tow. So spent last 13 years on the West Coast and never really left Asheville necessarily. Always kind of took it with me. Maintained a pretty tight social network and my family is all still here. And then choosing Asheville to return to, my husband had been in Los Angeles for 18 years, originally from Denver. And I tried to coax him east. We could try different cities. And he said, no, if we can't make Asheville work, we're not moving. So here we are.
Great.
Well, how about if we go right to Q and A? Which council member would like to start?
I'm just curious, in the, in your time, now that you've been back, and I know you've had an opportunity to observe the planning and zoning process. And I assume in your career, you've seen this in other areas. Do you have any sort of thoughts or reflections about what sticks out for you for Asheville in terms of our, our planning and zoning process and what folks experience here moving through the process? Is there anything that you noted about it, observations?
So I do have experience with other municipalities, going through their planning and zoning process, but usually on the, I'm an architect, so my, I'm usually presenting, not receiving the information. I have sat in on a Planning and Zoning Commission meeting and I came to a city council meeting to see when the Form-based code was approved and accepted.
The Haywood Road.
Yeah, exactly. And I've talked with some friends who are in real estate, commercial real estate, and there seems to be a perception that Asheville, while amazing place to build in, can be a little tricky. And so I've done a little research and I've read through some of the Planning and Zoning Commission minutes. And it seems that sometimes the public input is coming after a lot of the design and information gathering input. And so it's, it's, it almost seems backwards. It would be nice to see a process where the community input is solicited early, it's solidified, and then developers have something to react to. Because I've been in that position before where you really are, you have a very vague set of standards. And so you're trying to pull together a project and you have no idea how that's going to be received by the community, the stakeholders, the municipality, the residents. So it seems like a lot of what Asheville's planning and zoning, they have to keep going through the same process where negotiations are sometimes leveled late in that design process instead of completely upfront. And it's not, to be fair, it is not specific to Asheville. And I think all planning departments that I've worked with are struggling and they're using new tools to try to reorganize the process and how it, how it works.
You mean, there's another way to do this?
Can you relate?
Hold on a second.
Go on.
Well, to further that thought, today, the mayor and I were in a meeting with some community folks that were having, having a problem with a subdivision. And one of their suggestions was rather than giving the notice 10 days before a P and Z meeting, maybe that notice should be given before the TRC meeting.
I think that's a great idea. And I mean, personally, I know if I were working on a project, the earlier I could get input, the better I will feel about going forward. There's a lot of work and a lot of effort and a lot of money and a lot of risk. And so to wait so late in the process to get that feedback, it's daunting.
And the balance between, I've heard that answer today and I've also heard, there are some people who, no matter how much notice you give them, they're never going to be happy. You still would?
Well, you still provide the notice. You provide the opportunity and you allow those folks. And it's sometimes a vocal minority that will tend to be heard. And I think it's important on the commission side to understand that you will have, sometimes it's the wealthier, the landowners, those that understand the regulatory system, and there are those that don't have as loud a voice. And so kind of keeping that in balance.
Yeah, related to that, it's been suggested to me that before planning and zoning, we have the technical review committee review, and that's where the professionals, police, the fire, the sanitation, all sign off on the package, sign off on the proposal that it meets their technical standards. And that may be perhaps one of the boxes that needs to be checked during TRC is outreach to the community or to the surrounding neighborhood so that that can be quantified, what form that took and that kind of thing as well, too.
Absolutely. And the scale of the project, I know it's very different. I've worked on really large projects where PR professionals are involved early in the entitlement process. They're going door-to-door and really getting buy-in early. Small developers can't rely on that kind of support. But I don't think it hurts to have a little bit of input early in the process.
But do you, and welcome back to the community. I remember you as a little girl coming to the TRC. The, do you feel like, though, that we may be raising an expectation when we're going, when we're putting advertisement out there to go, that a TRC meeting, a technical review meeting is happening where people who are professionals in the area they're talking about really are not looking for the comment on, well, we don't like the color of this or something like that. They're not looking for that information. Is that going to raise expectations too much?
Potentially. And so to that, I would say, whenever you're having a per-project public review, people will focus on specific things, thinking that they're going to be able to substantially change the project. Whereas I think that level of input is really important as a foundation for creating a neighborhood plan, whether it's you have neighborhood councils or something. And I think that's what, I'm really excited to see how the Haywood Road, the Form Base works. Because when you have that community input really early and there's buy-in, I feel like there's a lot less fear. There's, there's measured expectation. And so if you could really collect that information at that level of planning and then there's a vision that can be codified further down, I don't know, I think it would make the process a lot smoother.
And I'm concerned myself, and I was saying this probably as much to Gwen as you, but the, if we had done, if we, a project like Larchmont, which is a very important project, very transitional project in where it was, had we have gleaned that sort of public input upfront, I'm not sure anybody would have had the stomach to go through with.
Right. Well, yeah, I mean, it's, it is a concern.
Well, and I think there's an educational component as well, is when you have these, these community meetings, I think that the, the community needs to understand the socioeconomics and the demographics and the need for affordable housing and that every community will have a responsibility to provide some level of input into providing those really, those necessary improvements. And so you're right, you know, I, my, my mother told me all about the Larchmont project. She was, she was very nervous. And now.
No big deal.
No big deal.
Well, and I think, you know, when you talk to so many of the, the residents and the citizens of Asheville, I've not gotten anybody who looks at me and says, I don't believe in density, I don't believe in affordable housing, anything like that. But that's not the issue. The issue is when it's in my neighborhood. That's, that's when the rubber hits the road.
Sure, sure. And so I think that the commission has, or council has an opportunity to look at the zoning. And as the, you know, as Asheville's changed, the neighborhoods, they change. Newcomers come in and they might have different needs than the folks who've been there a really long time. But kind of balancing both those needs. And then sometimes you just say to this neighborhood, well, you're growing, you're changing, you're on a fringe. And you're, you might go from an RM8 to a 16 or a corridor business or, you know, and not, not to impose necessarily. I mean, I think input's important, but.
Personally, I think that was the thinking behind the Sunset Parkway proposal there. But there was a lot of pushback from the community on any kind of change like that, too.
It seems like one of the themes in your application and hearing you talk is around predictability, predictability for the developer and for the neighbors and, and finding ways to create more of it. And so, you know, talking about what if we did the notice before TRC, again, it still comes down to what are the expectations at that point if the developer has a meeting with the neighbors and chooses not to hear that input or comes away thinking, I've got to do all that stuff? How am I ever going to get my project to work? And so there would be another layer that would have to happen there, too, of what is the expectation of such a meeting? What, what, what do we as a council expect? Anyway, I just hijacked your interview.
Well, I think any project will probably have to, every project will have its own individual issues that the, the community will want to voice. But I think if you can do a lot of that groundwork upfront, perhaps some of the tension can be assuaged and some things can be hammered out and agreed upon. I mean, absolutely, it will not be a perfect process. There's no way you can come up with a plan and everybody's happy and you just slip your project right into it. But potentially dealing with some of those, grappling with some of those issues that are, people get very passionate about upfront, maybe it could smooth the way a little bit. That's all.
Are you familiar with protest petitions?
I do, I do understand.
Do you favor them or not?
Again, they, they play to that vocal minority that knows how to, to use the regulatory and municipal system. So when a protest petition by some wealthier landowners to stop something when the folks needing affordable housing, they need a voice as well. I mean, that can be.
We're vice versa.
Absolutely.
A question here, Laura. This council has identified goals around increasing density to support affordable housing and, and sort of match with current trends in urban areas and increasing tax base and so on. We talk about updating the comprehensive plan, perhaps changing up the UDO a little bit to be consistent and get rid of some of the, or not get rid of, but fix some of the, you know, problem zoning spots that tend to be around town. Any reflections on timing of that process, especially the role Planning and Zoning Commission might play in that? You know, what, what, what would you share with this reflection wise on all that?
When should we begin to look at changing? I think now. I mean, I think no one disagrees that Asheville is growing, good, it's exciting. I love, I mean, I've been coming back for years and, and every, every visit, something else has changed and it's different and it's, it's just makes this place wonderful. I think that as gentrification starts, those, and they, gentrification is not necessarily pejorative. It brings great things. It reduces crime, increases property value, stimulates economic activity. But as that happens, there will be changes to affordability. And I think you want to consider development without displacement. And it's, it's at that very beginning, it's at the onset that it's important to look at the strategies to then figure out, well, as South Slope is going to, I mean, it has so much opportunity. But how can you make sure that within that, without stifling any of the development, how can you still provide a mechanism to allow for the affordable housing? And so absolutely, I'd say now is the right time.
Great. Any follow-up? Any, as you've looked at our 2025 plan and particularly our UDO, are there areas that you think stand out as needing to be addressed or changed, either format-wise or substance-wise?
Well, I don't know how often the UDO is updated, but as Asheville, it grows and the demographics change, I think some of the zoning designations potentially could be looked at. I know that, you know, there's effort now going into the corridors, Charlotte Street, South Slope, River Arts. And I think that Broadway recently got a kind of a new zoning designation which provides for incentives for mixed use. I think that should continue, that there might be some areas that are outdated in potentially how the city's changing and that could cause tension. The UDO is a technical and wordy document and a lot of times it's very difficult to understand. And I think one of the, the benefits of the Form-Based is that it pulls from the new urbanism, which they rediscovered the, the power of the graphic tool, plans, elevations and perspectives and to communicate a little more clearly. And I know personally, looking at, it's a little confusing, the, we always in California relied on SAR, floor area ratio, to understand density, and Asheville does not.